Okay, we're gonna open the Hood River City Council meeting of April 25th. It is 6:02. I just remind people to turn off or silence your cell phones. And we will do the land acknowledgement first and then the pledge of allegiance. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years. Before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. We'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
All right, we have one person signed up for Business from the Audience, Dale Hill.
Thank you honored city council members. My name is Dale Hill and I live about two miles outside of Parkdale in the Upper Valley. I'm providing this public comment on the proposed legislation for Mount Hood National Recreation Area. I greatly appreciate your efforts to look at the benefits of supporting such legislation. And to consider all viewpoints and potential impacts and concerns for residents of the city Hood River and the greater Mount Hood area. Residents in your jurisdiction hike, bike, kayak, camp, sail, kite, surf, ski. And recreate generally in the region, they are all impacted by the lack of broad and coordinated planning in the Mount Hood area. A lack of planning and funding for services and infrastructure is perhaps the most significant problem faced. I believe that the proposed legislation will better serve residents and protect the natural resources down here. Mount Hood and its environments are a magnificent resource that is among the most used and most visited national forests in the entire US Forest Service system. I believe recreational use needs to be viewed with an eye to enhancing, yet not necessarily expanding such use. I urge you to consider the following topics and concerns regarding further development of the proposed legislation. One, planning and accompanying funding is essential to success in the challenges that recreational uses present. Do not neglect these considerations. Two, the foundation of the proposal needs to be well grounded in the health of the forest. Recreation users benefit from healthier forests which preserves the qualities they wish to see and experience in the forests. Three, inclusion of some wilderness options and other regulatory designations may make it more difficult for local authorities. Fire and irrigation services, for example, to serve their constituents in Hood River Valley. Please consider the impacts of such designations on our residents. Four, economic activity is strengthened and diversified with a greater emphasis on recreation. Recreational uses in the forest support businesses and jobs located in the surrounding communities. Furthermore, these benefits tend to remain in the local economy. Five, recreation resources are important to enhancing recreational opportunities. Prioritize rehabilitation and renovation of existing roads and trails. Plus the development of interconnected trail networks for all modalities. Consider new infrastructure support only in appropriate places and scales. And six, recreational experiences are already negatively impacted by more people, transportation pressure and congestion. The current transportation option of individual vehicles needs to be replaced and supplemented with alternative, more extensive public transport network. In summary, more people, bikes, canoes, kayaks, skiers, cars, campers, etc. Are desirable at an individual or family level, but comes at a qualitative cost in larger quantities. Improved planning can help, but care must be taken to balance additional pressure. With the carrying capacity of the environment, the ecological integrity of essential natural systems and the quality of human experiences. Thank you again for your service as our elected officials. And your help in looking ahead to serving the outdoor recreational needs for residents of Hood River. The neighboring communities and the greater Portland metro area. Thank you.
Thank you Dale, your comments. And then we didn't have anyone else online that was going to speak.
I just wanted to let you know that Costa Rivera is online, but her video is not working. She is present today.
Okay, I will, when I don't see someone there, then sometimes I don't remember. So Gladys, if you want, just speak up if I forget because I don't see you there.
So that's okay, I will, thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks. So first thing off, we have a presentation by Mid Columbia Community Action Council and update from Kenny LaPointe. Come on up Kenny.
This thing all set up for me? How do I go about this? Is this a computer? Okay, cool. Good evening Mayor McBride, members of the council. My name is Kenny LaPointe, I'm the Executive Director of Mid Columbia Community Action Council. Glad to be back here with you again to provide you with some updates on the agency. And I provided a PowerPoint and as well as a presentation for your packets in advance. I'm not going to go through every single slide, I just like to remind folks of who we are and what we do through our presentations. But did want to focus on a few key areas. As a reminder, we are the community action agency that serves Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties. Included in the presentation is our annual report, which I wanted to give you some updates on the work we've done in 2021. So in 2021, we provided over $4 million in assistance to households throughout the region, which is about a one and a half million dollar increase from 2020. So pretty significant increase for services in the region. Paid over a million dollars in utility assistance on behalf of local households, serving 2,713 people. Forty-six point four percent of those households were people of color, native or Latinx community members. So one of our goals through our strategic planning process was to achieve equity in our programs. And part of that was conducting outreach to the communities that are represented across our region. And so we feel like we're making some good steps in that, in that progress and look to continue to do that. We're, we're definitely able, able to achieve that through partnerships with agencies like Niche Wana Housing, The Next Door and the Oregon Human Development Corporation here in the region. We also significantly increased our production on the weatherization program. So as a reminder, the weatherization program can provide energy efficiency upgrades in homes where they may have higher than normal utility bills. And provide insulation, air sealing of the home, new energy efficient appliances, new heating systems, air conditioning systems. In 2021, we were able to weatherize 17 homes. In our prior year, we did five. So we've increased the number of homes we're serving in that program pretty significantly. And 76% of the households we served were Latinx community members. We do anticipate doing even more this next year. We're on track to do about 21 homes this next year. And then we do anticipate receiving some additional funding through the federal infrastructure package, which will allow us to probably double the number of homes we do next year. On the housing side of things, we served 1,300 households with housing assistance, really dollars to help get people out of homelessness and into permanent housing. Or funding to help keep people in their existing homes. So we've been running a rental assistance program in partnership with the Mid Columbia Housing Authority, which is designed to help households who've been impacted by COVID-19. Whether it's economic impacts, have lost, have not been able to go to work because children have missed school. We're able to help them keep up on their rent. We're still running a program that does that same thing. So if you know folks who've been impacted and need assistance in paying rent so they don't get evicted, send them our way. And we can make sure and get them taken care of. We served 18 veteran households through our supportive services for veteran families program. That program provides rental assistance, security deposits, case management for formerly homeless veterans. Or veterans who are currently homeless looking to get into permanent housing. We did place five veterans into permanent housing from that program, five of the 18. And then we just added another veteran case manager, so it will allow us to double our case management size. So we essentially should be able to get up over 30 households being served. In our shelter programs, which is an area that I just really want to note has been pretty significant impact. We provided nearly 21,000 shelter bed nights in 2021. In the prior year in 2020, we provided around 5,000 shelter bed nights. The region had around 5,000 shelter bed nights. That includes Hood River Shelter Services and the work that Mid Columbia Community Action was doing before. So we, we really ramped up the number of shelter bed nights. A lot of that was hotel motel voucherering, continuing to serve folks through Hood River Shelter Services, serve folks through our shelter in the Dalles. So we've been able to ramp that up a lot. Also important to note, a couple of things important to note is, I think I mentioned this before. Everyone who comes into our shelter is required to enter into a housing case management plan. So we're, we're getting them focused on the future, so they're looking at permanent housing and how they're going to make some, you know, do some things that they need to do in order to get into permanent housing. So we have housing case managers that are working with everyone who is in our shelter, including Hood River Shelter here. In 2021, we were able to place 21 of our shelter clients. There was 80 shelter clients served in 2021. We placed 21 of them into permanent housing during that time. We have in the last, since the beginning of this year, we've placed 30 households into permanent housing from shelters. So we're starting to make a lot more progress on placements into permanent housing, which is definitely the goal here. Additionally, I think you all know that our shelters were stood up in response to COVID-19. So we went from the congregate sheltering model where you'd have cots and a gym or something to that effect, to the tiny home shelters. The design was to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So it was, you know, separating folks from each other, so there wasn't as much a likelihood of spread. I'm proud to say that in 2021, we did not have one single person test positive for COVID-19 in our shelter. I'm not going to say that that's entirely because of everything that we did, part of it's, I believe, luck. But we did not have any COVID positive tests. We did have multiple vaccination clinics, so our shelter clients were getting vaccinated. And that we'd also did multiple testing clinics, so we were staying on top of folks. We did have shelter staff that tested positive, but we immediately isolated them. And they never came in contact with shelter clients. So as we move into the future, we have a few big projects going on. I think I talked about the navigation center last time I was here. And there's a lot of work going on there, which I'll update you on in a moment. We're also working on some permanent supportive housing, which I mentioned also in the last time I was here. But we have a site in the Dalles that we're planning to build 75 units of permanent supportive housing on. Kind of got delayed a little bit because we were doing some, we had to do some environmental analysis of the site. That's all been cleared and we're planning on submitting an application for state funding later this year, early next year. So as a reminder, the navigation center, a navigation center is, in legislation, it is a shelter that has services onsite. We have really expanded the definition of a navigation center for our own purposes. And we're creating what we call a one-stop shop. So a large social service center where clients can come in and receive services from multiple providers. Rather than go all over town trying to find services, navigating systems, they're coming to one site, one place. And we can openly communicate across multiple agencies in that one site. This site will also be the future location of our shelter in the Dalles. We received 1.5 million dollars from the Oregon Legislature in the 21 session. And then we received another 1.5 million dollars from the Oregon Legislature in this last short legislative session, thanks to the advocacy of Representative Williams. We also have received $500,000 in American Recovery Plan Act funding from the city of the Dalles. And then 400,000 from Wasco County. And then we have another two and a half million, $3 million that is coming from Oregon Housing and Community Services and the Oregon Health Authority. The project at this point in time, it from a development standpoint is fully funded. We were also very fortunate that a community member stepped up and donated 2.6 acres of land to us for the development. I think I have, there's the location of the, of the site. It is on West Seventh Street in the Dalles, so it's a general commercially zoned property, but it is in residential commercial area. So it is next to Coastal Farm and Ranch, behind Coastal Farm and Ranch in the Motel 6, kind of close to the movie theater. There's a couple of different vacant lots there, but that is where we're planning on building the navigation center. And we are working well through the pre-development, early development phases and plan to submit for permits this summer. And we're hoping that the project will be completed by June 30th of 2023 is our target date right now. But we, we have moved on pretty good, pretty quickly to get this project rolling. As a reminder, the project will house the Oregon, so the offices of the Oregon Human Development Corporation. The Columbia Gorge Health Council and Bridges to Health and Niche Wana Housing, they will all be moving their full offices to the location. And then we will have some co-located offices for The Next Door, the Mid Columbia Center for Living, One Community Health. Will have a, a large parking area for, for its mobile medical unit. So it will be coming onsite weekly, which it does right now at our shelter site. And then we're also going to be, we'll have a DHS eligibility specialist who will be onsite full-time. Assessing folks eligibility for DHS programs like SNAP benefits, self-sufficiency programming, vocational rehab as well. So those will all be office operated on one site. We also have a commercial kitchen that'll provide food service to the residents of the shelter. We'll have a large community meeting space where, you know, we could hold, you know, board meetings, committee meetings, whatever it might be. And we're going to have a job training center that includes a computer lab. And then there's going to be a childcare, drop-in childcare space, not full-time childcare, but drop-in childcare space. If you're bringing, if you're coming into the navigation center, you got your kiddo in tow, you can drop him off at drop-in childcare. And you don't have to go engage in a potentially traumatizing conversation with the case manager with your kiddo next to you. And then have to explain that later on. So we're trying to be very trauma informed in both our operations processes as well as our design. We've hired an architect that specializes in trauma informed design. And so that is being built into how the project is, is overall designed. The Housing Development Center is our development consultant on the project. We, we hired them early on to help us through that. They do nonprofit affordable housing development as well as community services center development. Access Architecture is the architectural firm and then Bremic Construction is our general contractor. We hired Bremic because they had the most familiarity with working with local subcontractors. So it's a huge priority for us to keep the dollars in the region as much as possible. Bremic has also done other projects in the, in the area such as the One Community Health Building, the Duffer School. As well as a few others, which I believe are included in your packet. We also have a priority for hiring businesses owned by veterans, women, native, Latinx and people of color. So that is a, a value of our project team and we're making sure that that is followed through within our procurement for contract subcontractors. So this is just a glimpse of the site plan for the navigation center. I will say that since I gave this to you, it has changed. So, and it will probably change a few more times, but you get the general lay of it here. The navigation center being sort of at the front, the building's approximately 14,000 square feet. The backside of the property having the little white squares you see are the shelter units themselves. We've actually changed that pod structure around a bit. We will have our, our sanitation trailer, the shower trailers will be in the back as well. There will also be a shelter office in the back. And then there's community gardens that are built in in between for folks who are staying in the shelter to utilize. What's not shown here is this, again, this property is 2.6 acres. There's another acre of land left on the back after we developed out the navigation center. And we tentatively are planning to build permanent supportive housing on the backside of the site. How quickly that happens will depend on some state funding streams that we have our eyes on right now. But having permanent supportive housing on that site will make a whole lot of sense. Because we will have all the services right there for folks to access. So it would be pretty simple to run it from that standpoint. Here's the other examples of Bremic Construction's work here in the community. The last thing I wanted to update you on is like, there's a couple of other things in here, but I wanted to provide an update on the point in time count. So I think as you all know, the point in time homeless count happened at, at the beginning of this year in January. That count is, the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level determines when we have to do that count. So they say you have to do it in January every year and you get to pick a day that you do it. And so we picked a day, we did it in January. I would say that we did a really good job of coordinating as a community. We had lots of volunteers and lots of agencies that were involved in the count, which is reflective in some of the numbers that I'll highlight. In Hood River County, we identified 71 people experiencing houselessness. And I will say that there's a full survey taken with folks, we're not walking around with a chalkboard, just drawing lines. There is an actual survey that is done on a tablet with folks and they self-identify with each of these categories that you see here. So an increase in the number of people in Hood River County experiencing homelessness by 15. An increase in the number of people unsheltered by 22. We also saw increases across the entire region in the number of people who were, who identified as having a mental health disorder or substance use disorder. So there were significant increases there. And then it is worth noting that we had significant increases in the native population. We attribute that to partnership with Niche Wana Housing and The Next Door, who helped get out to in-lose sites and do counts where that did not happen in previous years. Those are some of the big highlights, I would say, you know, overall, we had a 74% increase in the region with most of that increase, increase being in Wasco County. Wasco County had 194 people who were experiencing homelessness compared to around, I think it was 110, 115, the prior point in time count. The significant increases, again, the native community, Latinx community members, we, we have partnerships. We, we have partnerships with organizations, again, like the Nextdoor, Niche Wana Housing, the Oregon Human Development Corporation to help do the point in time count with these communities that they work with. And so that really helped us get a better sense of who was experiencing houselessness in the region. It is also worth noting that, you know, I highlighted earlier in our annual report that we had a lot more shelter beds available for community members. That is reflected in the numbers of people who were identified as homeless, who were sheltered homeless. So when you see sheltered or unsheltered, you may ask yourself, well, if they're sheltered, why are they homeless? Well, it, it is a technical term that they're in a shelter at the time that the point in time count is done. The last thing I just wanted to give you a brief update on, I don't think we were working on House Bill 4123 when I came to you last, but a bill went through the legislative, the short legislative session. The Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities sponsored this bill with a representative out of Bend. The idea behind this is that we have collaboration between counties and cities to address homelessness. Wasco County, Hood River County, Sherman County, the city of Hood River and the city of the DOWs all supported as going in and participating in this legislation. Mid-Columbia Community Action Council was identified as the lead agency as part of this pilot project. The bill passed through the legislature, which means we are going to receive $1 million in resources to do homeless service coordination across those three counties, two cities. That coordination will be led by our agency, will be identifying somebody to head up, what maybe called the Joint Office of Homeless Services or something along those lines. And we'll be able to do some, some coordination work across cities and counties. The other piece of it is to build a strategic plan around ending houselessness or addressing houselessness. We've already been doing that work through the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative, which Mayor has participated in. That Houseless Collaborative was funded by Providence Health Systems. So the resources that Providence brought in to build the Houseless Collaborative allowed us to leverage this $1 million in additional funding. We'll also be using a portion of that $1 million to actually provide direct services to people. It's actually very exciting to be involved in the development of a strategic plan that has some money behind it before you even start the process. So I can't say that I've ever been involved in a process like that before. So we're very excited about that. The Houseless Collaborative continues to meet and will begin the real work of, of developing the strategic plan at its meeting in May coming up. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wow. You guys are amazing. I mean, these numbers just are, you know, just blow my head off. I mean, this is just so great compared to a couple of years ago. You guys have done so much. I don't have any questions, you guys.
Thanks for coming. I definitely second the wow factor of the amount you guys have been able to do in the last few years. It's amazing and I'm so thankful you're doing that work. I guess the question I think we ask every time you come of, of what do you want or need from the city to help you in that work? Where, where are we fitting in? Is there something we need to do differently?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think my answer to that question is you're going into budget process here. As you go into that, I think considering how, how the city can contribute to some of the projects we have going on, I think one of the big questions we get for the navigation center is how are the other communities whose populations are going to be utilizing the services? How are they contributing? We also have a couple more things that we're hoping will come through in the city of Hood River right now, but I'm not going to talk about them quite yet until I feel a little bit more confident in them. But I would just consider, consider that in your budget process. So whether it's some flexible resources we can utilize to provide services, which is probably the best place, I think it would be really helpful as we make some advocacy stands as we push projects through. As you all are familiar with, there's always an envious when you have a project that you're working on of this nature. And we've experienced that in the city of the DOWs. We're very confident in, in where we're at with that. But whenever we can get more support from the city surrounding us, it's, it's really helps us out. That's what my ask would be.
Just concur with, thank you so much for everything that you do. It's incredibly important service and folks that really, really need some help. I really, really wish.
Thanks.
All for that. My mind is the least among us and so I just feel like we're the three sets, so thank you. I did have two questions. First, as concerns, this is the number if I counted right, I think that he says it was 18 units. I was curious, just wanted to speak to that number. Is that, I actually assumed higher, but maybe there's a reason for 18. And then secondly, completely unrelated to me, I heard, I just wanted to make sure I was correct or incorrect, that your organization might be working for shelter services, coming here, taking it over or something, I just wasn't sure about that. Speak of relationships specifically to the Columbia Community Action Council.
Sure. So we have 18, 18 units. Each unit has, it's 18 units in the city of the DOWs and there's 13 here, right? And each of them has two beds in them. So there's 36 beds in Hood River 26, or in the DOWs 26 here. There wasn't necessarily any specific calculation to that number. We do feel like it is a, a good sweet spot for us right now, not trying to bite off more than we can chew. It allows us to really focus a lot of attention on the people that are being served there and make sure that we're able to help, help them get in the best position possible to move forward and be successful. And we've done that, like I mentioned before, we've been able to transition folks into permanent housing really well. We don't know how long shelter, and I don't really actually want shelter to be here forever. The goal is that it's gone at some point. We have housing capacity, we can put people into permanent housing when they need to get in there. So it's, it's really a good spot for us right now, which probably lends a little bit to the next question. In the last couple of years, we've acted primarily as a funder to Hood River Shelter Services. So we've, we received a large emergency solutions grant from the state of Oregon and we utilize, we pass those dollars along to Hood River Shelter Services to run their operations. I think you all know that Sarah Kellums is, is moving along and is, you know, deserves a ton of thanks and gratitude for her work. And I think there's an opportunity for that coming up here soon. But tons of thanks and gratitude for her work to make sure people were safe throughout winter time. So we're working closely with them to identify what the most appropriate role is for Mid-Columbia Community Action in the future. We do see ourselves as being sort of the lead coordinator on homeless services, which is reflected in some of the work we have going on here. So however we can support Hood River Shelter Services moving forward, we're happy to. We have, you know, staffing capacity to make that happen. We've passed $3 in the past, we can look at a different model. We're still kind of working on that with, with their board and trying to see what the best spot is for us. But there will be shelter for people this next winter. Nothing is shutting down.
Let's see, Jessica, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions for me, just thank you so much Kenny for all your work.
Thanks Jessica.
And Gladys?
Thank you Mayor. Hi Kenny, thank you so much for all the work that you and Community Action Council is providing to our communities. I do not have any additional questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks for having me, look forward to coming back. Hopefully when we have some big projects completed.
You've done so much in this last year. I mean, you should not feel at all like, it's just amazing how much you've done that. Really appreciate it. All right. Our next item is a public hearing. So I have a script here for that. We'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 202204 regarding designating certain city-owned property interests as surplus. The public hearing this evening will be conducted in the following order. First, we will hear a staff report on the resolution. Then staff will take questions, if there are any, from members of the council. Then we will hear, then the hearing will be opened for public testimony. The council will hear testimony in favor of and in opposition to Resolution Number 202204. After all testimony is heard, the public hearing will be closed and no further comments from the public will be entertained. Then we will have further questions, if any, by the council and council will deliberate and vote. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions that should be addressed through me. When we come forward, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And did you want me to have, Jennifer, read that now? The resolution by title or let's go through with the hearing first? Looking to Chris to see if there's a preference, but I can do a 30-second staff report if you'd like.
Go with the, yeah, do the hearing first and then you can read the resolution.
Okay, all right. Thank you Mayor. Avigail Elder, City Manager, I have, I thought I would bring up a couple of visuals if they're still up here with the map. I think I need to go on Google or Zoom and share. Would you mind? Thanks. Tonight's hearing is a surplus designation for a sale of a property that's located in a geographical area that is on Tucker Road in the county, but inside the urban growth boundary. Thank you. The parcel is approximately 0.07 acres. It was previously used by the city's water system for a pressure release valve. And the city was approached by the Big River Community Land Trust, interested in building a unit of affordable housing on that site. Affordable housing, of course, has been one of council's top priority for the last couple of years. I've got here, this is the Google Street View map, just to give you an idea of what this parcel looks like. I also can show you, I think on your, in your packet, there is a, there's a picture of it from the county website as well. Those are the basics, happy to answer any questions. Questions? Yes. Yep, and that small structure there is where the PRB was. And in discussion with Big River Land Trust, they are willing to take down the structure and any related work. Appreciate that from them. All right. Jessica, any questions? And Gladys?
No.
All right. Let's see here. Is there anyone that would like to give testimony regarding this today, one way or the other? No, no one from the audience is raising their hand, so there isn't any testimony from the public. And council doesn't have any questions, so let's go ahead and deliberate. Thoughts, any initial thoughts? Kim?
It seems like a reasonable thing to do and I think we should just go ahead and do it.
All right. Megan?
I'm supportive, I have one minor change to the resolution to propose, but.
Okay. Eric?
Yes, I'm supportive as well. I think this idea of land trust is a bold experiment. And in some ways, it's not really fair to have this be the test because it's so small. And so if it fails, I, we can't necessarily blame the recipient. But you know, there are things we have to balance as we consider doing this going forward. You know, the loss of tax revenue, the lack of control to some degree of what happens with the property and how it's passed along down to future generations. So these are things I think about as I consider these proposals, but I sort of commend this organization for identifying this parcel. And again, it's almost an unfair test because it's so small, but I wish them well. And if they can really do something with this, then it's sort of like double credit because it is, it is so small. So I wish them well and hope for a successful project.
All right, Jessica?
I am supportive, I'm happy to have an opportunity to support the land trust. I appreciate staff putting a, a comment in there about that they need to make substantial progress towards development within two years, which I'm sure the land trust will be chomping at the bit to do. But I, I do like having something in there to, to encourage them to do that. So thank you, that's all I have.
Gladys?
I too, I'm in full support of this and I echo Counselor Metta's comments around the clause that's included in there. Excited to see the outcome.
All right, and I'm also very supportive of, of this idea. I think that the resolution covers, you know, what we want to happen with the property. You know, it's, and goes along with our values of what we want to happen and the land trust values of what they want to happen. So, you know, I think that it's, it's a good mesh. And I wish them luck on it, it is small. But I'm sure that they'll work hard to try and get something going within the next two years. So I'm definitely supportive of this. So Megan, do you have a resolution? I think we're going to move this to consent agenda is what we're going to actually do.
So I would like to see if council's interested in one minor change to the language in the resolution. On page 23 of the packet, so in various parts of the resolution, it talks about a, a unit of affordable housing must be built. And then on the second bullet of the final further resolved, it says, construction of a single-family home. And, and while that's probably what will be built, I didn't, I didn't want to limit the land trust's ability to, to choose what type of unit they're building. And so I wondered if we could change the language to match everywhere else of a unit of affordable housing.
And so what would it say? What would it say exactly under that?
That's a whole long sentence, but grading and preparation of the site and compliance with all applicable state and local requirements, obtaining all necessary permits for the construction of a unit of affordable housing on tax lot 500 and so on.
Yeah, I.
I'm in support.
Okay. Did it say single-family housing because that's what it zoned out there? Do, do we know if that's why it says single-family?
It's currently zoned rural center. And I think that the land trust is already in conversation with the county about what that would look like to rezone. Yeah, I, I think this was just the way we and our city attorney had written it. I, I don't see any significant change by, by making it more general to say a unit of affordable housing. I'm looking to Chris to see if he's got any comments on that. Chris, you're muted.
You're muted. Yeah, you're still muted.
Okay, how about that, better?
That's it, yeah.
So I, I agree that that makes sense to delete the phrase, the term, single-family home and we're in, insert in its place, unit of, or a housing. I don't know about the zoning and how to, how it applies in the county, but they're also presumably House Bill 2001 impacts. Let's say wherever a single-family home is allowed, you have to allow middle housing. Probably can't even squeeze middle housing in on that size parcel. But because we don't know, it probably is a, a change that makes sense, not to specify a single family, but just put in a unit of housing.
Okay. I, I'm good with it.
Sure.
You're good. Eric? Jessica? Okay, and Gladys already said she was good with that, okay.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion. I move to add Resolution 2022-04 with the minor amendment mentioned tonight, designating certain city-owned property interest as surplus and authorizing their sale onto tonight's consent agenda.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, to add Resolution 202204, designating certain city-owned property interests as surplus and authorizing their sale onto the consent agenda with the minor changes that Megan suggested. All those in favor of moving it to the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. All right. Good luck, guys. All right. We'll go ahead and open the work session. And do we have any agenda additions or corrections to the work session?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. We have one discussion item, which is a huge item. We have a huge packet for it. And Jennifer Caden is going to lead that from staff. After reading through that thing, oh my God, you guys did a lot of work. Wow.
Thank you, Mayor, and good night, everyone. Good night, councilors. I'm here tonight with Beth Goodman from Echo Northwest. She's online to present the Affordable Housing Strategy. You've talked about this a few times. This is a plan for the city to focus its housing efforts on housing for people with incomes below 120% area median family income over the next several years. Housing has been a top priority for you for many years, and this isn't the first of city actions on affordable housing. You just took one a moment ago, and there was mention of another one earlier tonight from Kenny LaPointe about city funding for utility assistance for low-income households. And this won't be the last of the city efforts. This strategy is meant to build on past and current efforts in affordable housing and lay out next steps the city can take to encourage the develop, more development of affordable housing here in Hood River. The need is urgent and it's varied. Last week, I spoke with a parent who was lamenting the appreciation he has realized in his house because he sees it now through a different lens in that his his young adult children cannot find a place to live and they're living at home with him. I rode the chairlift with an acquaintance who's an executive at a local restaurant this weekend, and he was lamenting staffing challenges in part because of the challenges of finding housing for their workers. And painfully, we had a task force member who reached out to me and said she's looking for new housing because of a small increase in her income is pushing her out of her unit. Before Beth walks through the strategy, I want to take a few minutes to acknowledge our task force, including Councilor Saunders, who participated. You appointed 12 members of the community who represent different backgrounds and different perspectives. They met, they met five times on Zoom, two-hour Zoom sessions. They participated significantly in the lively discussions that they had. Their input is reflected throughout the report. There are a couple ways in which you, you can see it just from the last meeting alone. There was suggestions for some of the graphics that you see in the executive summary that helps piece together the strategies and shows how the city can work with partners to make this happen. And the name of the report was shortened. We took out the word production because everybody was a little bit confused by that word. So it's simply the affordable housing strategy. Other ways in which we heard the input and feedback of the task force is, is included throughout the report. I also want to briefly acknowledge the many people who participated in the seven listening sessions that we did with other community members and stakeholders. I've heard from a couple of them over the last few days since they received this packet. A retired local builder said he wished that some of these strategies were in place when he was building housing in Hood River. An affordable housing developer that we spoke with said, quote, "It would be great to see this toolkit implemented. It definitely will make affordable housing development in Hood River more viable from the outset." Another stakeholder said that he noticed several places in the report where there was a discussion of what level of affordability should the city invest in? Should it be less than or below 60% median family income or between 60 and 120% median family income? And to him, the answer was always both. And I agree, the answer is always, let's do as much as we can. Let's do both. Let's try to do it all. Can more be done? Of course more can be done. The more resources available, the more the city can do and the more creative we can get. And that raises an important point. Solving affordable housing needs is not a task for the city alone. The needs in Hood River, in the gorge, in the state, they can't be met by any one entity over any couple of years. It's going to take a continued concerted effort. And not only by the city, but by our partners and the community as a whole. The strategy doesn't have all of the answers, but it identifies some big steps forward. And it's a renewed focus on affordability. Implementation is going to require additional action, additional policy discussions and decisions on your part in your annual work plan and your budget process. I want to acknowledge that I received comments from a couple of you about some refinements and even minor edits that need to be made to the document. And I acknowledge that and I thank you for providing that feedback to me. We will make sure that those are taken care of. This strategy, we plan to bring back to you at your next meeting on May 9th to adopt by resolution. Tonight, we want to present the strategy and have a couple discussion questions for you, just to make sure we've got everything in place for, for May 9th. And with that, I'll hand it over to Beth to walk through the highlights of the strategy. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
So when we, when you bring this back, we will not do approval tonight. You just get feedback and then you'll bring it back in May. Is that correct?
Correct. We'll bring it back by resolution to adopt by resolution.
Okay, so you will have some changes, potentially some changes in the next version, correct?
Is that what you're saying? Yes, I'm, what my hope is that the changes are more along the lines of Scrivener's errors, but we do want to hear from you tonight. If there's something significantly missed, do we, and Beth will get to this, do we have the your thoughts about how we're going to implement this? Have we reflected that accurately?
Okay, even if they're just a Scrivener thing, if we have some changes, could you like put them in a different color text or do them as a track change or something? Just so that we can see, because if we've read through the whole thing, you know, and we have two or three changes and it's so much easier than to try and read through the whole thing and figure out where those changes were.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I will, Will and Dustin are also part of the project team. We're all available to help answer questions after Beth's presentation.
Go ahead, Beth.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me here today to discuss this. It's a, it's exciting to be at this point in the process with you all on this. Pardon me for one moment while I just adjust my screens. Um, okay, so we're going to step through the affordable housing strategy. And if there are questions as we go along, questions about what I'm presenting, that would be helpful to have them go as we go along. And then discussion hopefully at the end of the presentation. There we go. So we're conducting this housing need, the housing strategy, developing it because the private housing market in Hood River just isn't producing housing that's affordable for a lot of your, your households. So it's not producing housing that's affordable below 120% of median family income. And for a family of four, that's about $92,000. We're looking at long-term affordability and what are the opportunities for developing housing that stays affordable? As Jennifer said, we're building on prior efforts that Hood River has made. We'll talk about some of those efforts or at least show a slide that has some of those efforts in it a little bit later in this presentation. We're following the council goals that we've heard over the last few council meetings we had with you about ensuring that underrepresented voices are included in the project outcomes, adopting a limited and actionable number of strategies, ensuring strategies address equity, both of income and for underrepresented people in Hood River, and provide clear guidance on specific strategies. So as we're stepping through this, this graphic gives you an example of the different income levels that we'll be talking about and the kinds of housing that are affordable at those income levels. And these are examples for a household of four. So as we develop the AHS, the Affordable Housing Strategy, it includes information about the need for affordable housing in, in Hood River. It takes into account equity considerations that are partially represented in the data that we brought forward, but very much also represented in the qualitative data that we got from listening sessions that we did with different groups within Hood River. We've included that input in feedback and developed an actionable set of strategies and implementation steps. Now, implementation of the affordable housing strategy isn't, it isn't going to happen fast. And some of it's a little easier than others of it. Some of it's going to be hard. And we'll, we'll talk about those things, but many of the things that'll be harder are some of the more impactful strategies. So as we developed the affordable housing, we still have our P in here, but the affordable housing strategy, we were considering equity all throughout. So looking at unmet housing needs, both for lower-income households who are cost burdened, also looking at unmet housing needs of people of color, of people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness. So looking across a wide range of people, many of whom just plain don't have a voice in most communities. So those are identifying the vulnerable people who could benefit from the strategy, both who are vulnerable and who aren't. And about 65% of Hood River's population fits into this, less than 120% of median family income. So a lot of people in Hood River could benefit from implementation of the types of strategies that we talk about here. So we build on a community awareness to support and supporting engagement throughout the process. We use the engagement findings to really inform the development, the implementation steps for the strategy. So that, that's the engagement piece. Those were all part and parcel of developing the plan itself. So identifying outcomes that respond to community needs and promote housing stability and housing choice. And then as you're adopting and really implementing the housing strategy, you'll be looking at measurements. How do you measure your, your impact? And how do you measure what the housing strategy has achieved throughout the, the next five years or so? So all of these pieces, equity is, is grown into each of these pieces. The, the engagement we did, developing the plan and what we focused on. And then in the future, the, how the strategy is implemented. So as Jennifer said, we had seven listening sessions. And the last time we presented to you, we gave you a lot of detail of what we heard from those listening sessions. But just to go over that again, what we heard was that there's an urgent need, especially for low-income households, community of colors, seniors, people with disabilities and farm workers. There's a lot of obstacles to accessing affordable housing. Those include things like language barrier, accessibility for the disabled, and a housing inventory that just doesn't meet the needs of many of the people in Hood River, especially many of the people in your underrepresented groups. There was an emphasis in the discussions with the different groups about need for focus on equity and writing past harms that, as you'll hear in a few moments, went, went with the focus that we'll talk about from the task force around equity and putting emphasis on strategies that provide the most help for lower-income households, those most in need. So we also heard a lot about creating incentives and working with your partners, such as employers who are struggling to attract and retain staff. And then we also heard that the city needs to act fast because current projects such as Ran Road do tend to move a little bit more slowly. So how can we get more action sooner? Here's a picture of our task force and a little set of notes from one of the meetings that we had with the task force about some of the different strategies we discussed. As Jennifer mentioned, we met five times. The groups in general identified the need for both rental and ownership housing and a variety of housing types. They wanted to make sure that the process identified who would be impacted and why it matters in Hood River and made connections between the data that we brought to the, to the project with people living in Hood River. And it was very clear throughout this that there was more opportunities to give voice to people who have less voice in the process that the city can work on beyond this project. So looking at opportunities to better understand need for affordable housing, like Jennifer just did a few minutes ago. So what are people's stories? That really is something that I think affects people for, for good reason. And maybe an important part of a few of the strategies as we talk about those a little bit later. The task force asked us to, you know, look at opportunities to remove regulatory barriers and to provide help to retain and improve existing housing that is generally more affordable. So this focus on housing that's, that's more affordable ran throughout, of course. And then there was a suggestion that, that subsidies, money given for any types of projects really correlate with affordability, with the priority for the most affordable units. There was some concern by people on the task force that the project not just result in giving developers freebies essentially, or, you know, reduced costs, but results in people having more access to housing that is affordable. So there needs to be very much that connection between money spent and what is the public good? What is the city getting back from the affordability? A lot of discussion about leveraging partnerships with nonprofits, employers and other taxing districts that function within the city. Generally speaking, as we talked about funding issues, there was support, broadly speaking, about urban renewal and use of urban renewal to support affordable housing development. There was also some unease about the general obligation bond and whether that would be funded, be successfully get passed the public vote. And I'll, I'll tell you in a few minutes, a little bit of my opinion about that and why that matters for, for whatever that means. So we, we took the input from the advisory committee and also from the listening sessions. And it's really, it's really woven in to the housing strategy. Jennifer asked me to step back and, and look at some of the specific places it was woven in so we could call that out in the strategy. And it took a little while to tease all of that out because this wouldn't be the same strategy that you have in your hands if it hadn't been for all of that input. That input was essential for developing what you've got. So the, what we did since January, the task force provided more input to help refine these strategies. Staff had a lot of discussions with key partners to better understand how to frame some of the actions and what to include and what not to include. We drafted and we revised the strategies a couple of times now. And we drafted and revised the Affordable Housing Strategy Report that you have in your hand. So to talk a little bit about the strategies, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail throughout this because there's, there's a lot of detail in this report about each strategy. But, and these are not in order that we thought of importance. These are just in an ABC order so that we had some order to, to talk about the strategies. So the first one, item A, providing off-site infrastructure is really about the fact that when you develop a piece of land that's vacant, if it doesn't have infrastructure that can support it, so things like road connections or sewer. road connections or sewer or water pipes, sidewalks, that kind of infrastructure, you just can't get that housing built there. So that's one of the major things that the city can do is look at offsite infrastructure subsidies. And that can make it less expensive for building the affordable housing. And that's especially important for housing that is low income subsidized affordable housing. So housing that's affordable at less than sixty percent of median family income. And that can be important for building all types of housing as well. The city has a land banking program that it is used on Rand Road. And this is a continuation of the land banking program. Part of what could come out of this project would be another few, you know, two or three more of the same types of development you're looking in Rand Road, maybe with different emphasis. So the city might purchase land and sell or give that land to an affordable housing developer to develop new units. As you're talking here in both the, the top two here, number A and number B, these are, are really things that involve funds and should be tied to housing that's affordable over, over a longer period of time. Establishing a nonprofit tax exemption, this is one of the things that may be somewhat easier to implement than some of the others. What it is, is it's about a tax exemption for development of housing that's affordable below sixty percent of median family income for nonprofit organizations who wouldn't necessarily otherwise qualify for a tax exemption. Looking at providing direct project subsidies, so that's about what is it the city might do to support the building of new housing? So putting money directly into being one of the financiers essentially of a low income affordable housing development. So something that say it will have housing that's affordable at less than sixty percent of median family income. Or a little bit of a mixed income development as well. So something that has that very low income housing as well as some housing that's affordable at eighty percent or a hundred and a hundred percent of median family income, it can really vary some. So the housing rehabilitation and preservation, that split into two and, and some interesting ways. Sort of almost the last minute, it became apparent that your short term rental policies have a loophole in them in commercial areas where one, one owner of a multifamily building could have multiple short term rentals in it. So it could turn a multifamily building into something that's closer to an Airbnb type hotel. And so this part of this, this strategy proposes to close that loophole. So you've got one owner, one short term rental license. That's one part of it. And then the other part of it is the city funding rehabilitation of existing low cost market rate units in exchange for agreement to ensure the housing remains affordable. So some of your existing developers, really your existing nonprofits have things like weatherization programs or rehabilitation, rehabilitation programs. Rather than creating new programs, the city could put funding into those existing programs and support those partners in that way. And support that kind of low income households being able to maintain and remain in their homes. So something that's completely different, the Affordable Housing Ordinance as a regulatory piece that would really change the development code to expedite the review and improve approval of affordable housing. The city might also be looking more broadly at developing clear and objective standards for development of all types of housing. So you've got a few ways to go with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And that's one that I think will take some more discussion to figure out if the city wants to go one way or the other, or go both ways potentially. Establishing a new urban renewal district, I believe that's been talked about for the west side of town and through the urban renewal district, you can take care of things like offsite infrastructure. You can also provide direct project subsidies. So that would be a way to fund at least two and perhaps land banking as well. So several of these different strategies. And then the general obligation bond, and I think of this a little bit as shooting the moon. So this is a big thing, it's probably going to be complicated because you have to do things like gather stakeholder engagement, identify the projects that you're going to do through the general obligation bond. Establish, assemble a ballot measure and do a whole lot of polling around that ballot measure. And then convince people that it's worth to vote for. The stories that Jennifer was just telling about people who have unmet housing needs in Hood River, I think telling those unmet housing needs, telling those stories as part of how you'd be developing your, your general obligation bond and how you'd be marketing it. I think that that's very much more impactful than say all of the data that, that I can bring to this. Those, those tell the stories of people in Hood River. So the general obligation bond, while I think it may be, it may be a longer shot, I think it's worth a shot to take personally. But again, my personal opinion doesn't matter all that much. All right, so here's a little bit of, of the timeline for this. We wanted to remind you that you've done a lot. You adopted your housing needs analysis back in two thousand and fifteen. You dealt with your short term regulations. You've updated your townhouse code and renovated some historic buildings. You've done your middle income quote code, you're working on your Rand Road development. You've got here your affordable housing strategy and maybe you'll adopt, hopefully you'll adopt the Affordable Housing Strategy here in two thousand and twenty-two. And all the rest of these strategies run somewhere out beyond this into two thousand and twenty-seven. And, and perhaps beyond, perhaps this won't get all accomplished over these next five years. But it's a, a good set of things to try to get accomplished in that time. So the different strategies will help in different ways. Evaluating entitlements is really about your regulations. So the Affordable Housing Ordinance can clarify your standards for development, either of affordable housing or all housing, and simplify your review process. Again, you can focus that specifically to affordable housing or you could look at clear and objective standards, which at some point I believe the city will be required to. Things like purchasing property and constructing units, like what you're doing in Rand Road right there, those are things that really directly apply to actually building units. And these are units with, that would be very much supported by the actions and funding of the city. In looking at constructing the unit, you might look at offsite infrastructure. I, I was thinking about things like, maybe you just need a new traffic light to support that new development. Maybe you need something more complicated like a new road. All of those things, each of those will be the case in some different types of, some different types of development. Then you've got a strategy that lowers the cost of operating the building. So the nonprofit tax exemption reduces the ongoing operational cost. And that can, that results in supporting the affordable rents that would be required of that kind of building. And that kind of building would likely have federal money in it that already requires long-term affordability. So the city doesn't have to worry so much about will it stay affordable over a longer period of time? The answer with that federal, federal funding is yes, it will. And then preserving affordability through your short term rentals. And then through working with your partners to fund existing programs. So the implementation, some of these are standalone actions, like you establish your nonprofit tax exemption. You make your short term rental code amendment. Some of these are things where you're building on each other. So incorporating, incorporate eligible projects or programs under urban renewal plans through using things like land banking, direct project subsidies, your offsite infrastructure. You can do that kind of stack also with your general obligation bond. It can also help do all of those things. Some of them are mostly about collaborating with partners, like your affordable housing rehabilitation investments. And some of them are really about the land use process and the legislative process. So a couple of these things could probably be done simultaneously, although there would be a lot of wear and tear on your, your staff who do have a limited capacity to implement what I think is a, an ambitious agenda for the next five years. And then we want to emphasize the fact that most of these are led by the city as, as expected through this process. The one that is not necessarily led by the city is the housing rehabilitation and preservation. The part of it where you're supporting other partners, funding sources or other partners programs really. And then you have partners like your urban renewal agency, which could well have lead on some things like land banking, your project subsidies, your offsite subsidies, those would all become part of the urban renewal plan. Your affordable housing and your other developers, so your developers of market rate housing might well partner or provide support or input. And some would receive support. So for instance, a nonprofit tax exemption, that's where your, your low income housing developers, your affordable housing developers receive support from something like this. Your taxing districts, so the county, the school district, your transit district, your park district, all the other districts that I'm forgetting, they all have a role in partnering and supporting on a number of these things where taxes are, where there's some tax effect. So your urban renewal district, your tax exemption, your general obligation bond. Your nonprofit partners and your employers also have some important roles to play in a number of these. And quite frankly, I could see an employer having a role to play in land banking if they had some land that they wanted to use for affordable housing developer, development. And they were partnering with the city or perhaps an affordable housing developer to do that, that could easily be something that happens. So before I go on to the discussion, are there any questions about the things I just went through? It's a lot.
No, Eric? Jessica or Gladys?
Yeah, I do, I have a question, Beth. First of all, thank you so much for all of this information to you, to Jennifer, Will, Dustin, Kevin, Abigail, the task force members and Counselor Saunders. With some of these strategies that you have given or recommendations, I'm curious as to how we will define success with these strategies.
That is, pardon me, I did not mean to do that. That is a great point and give me one moment to get to the right part of the report which talks about monitoring.
Perfect, thank you.
I have it, Beth, on page sixty-two of the council packet. Which is
What is the?
Which is page twenty-seven of the, of the report.
All right, I was almost there.
Yeah, it's exhibit ten. It includes some monitoring ways of measuring success and monitoring in that table.
So you have to look at each of these pieces sort of one by one. But your, your largest, can you guys see this?
They have it.
We can see it.
Okay, so at the, the broadest level, during the period when this is in effect, how many affordable units are developed by income range? So for things like subsidized affordable housing, those will be something that you can, you know, pretty easily track how many are developed. Anything that the city is engaging in as a partner on, you should be able to track how many are developed and what income ranges. And of course, in some cases, it may well be a mixture of income range, range. And so how many units, how many projects? When you're looking at, well, Counselor Rivera, could I, instead of reading all of this off to you, ask you if you have a particular question about any one of these?
I, I appreciate that it's all written here. I guess I was wondering for specific numbers or specific percentages that you all recommended as outcomes based successes.
Okay, I was reading your question wrong. You know, I don't think that, I, I don't think that I have a particular number of affordable units. When I look at a place like Bend, which has been incredibly successful, their, their measure of that is all we can get. Like we'll take it all. So you're not going to be able to develop so much over the next five or 10 years to fix the problem. And I, and I would say that that policy is really a, a local policy. I would have to have a number in my head of how many units you are producing per year, how many are being built in Hood River. I mean, ten percent of new units, it wouldn't be enough. But it would be a lot more than you have now. So I think it really depends, I, I think you have to set that kind of goal based on, at least in part, what kind of funding you have. If you, if you don't have urban renewal and you don't have the general obligation bond, you're going to be able to do less. Just because those, those pieces, they take funding. Your existing CET is already obligated to Rand Road. So until that obligation is, is addressed, you won't be able to use that funding. So I, I think choosing an arbitrary number without having a good sense of what funding is available doesn't necessarily set you up for success.
Beth, I remember when we did the two thousand and fifteen housing analysis. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were involved in that.
I was, I was.
Okay, and a number stuck in my head that was five hundred units. But I don't remember if it was a hundred and twenty percent and below or eighty percent and below. And that number was to be achieved within, you know, we would need that many additional from where we were within the next twenty years. So we're now seven years down the road of those twenty, of those twenty. And that was, I believe, does that sound?
It sounds familiar. So another way to look at this is, these numbers, they get really big, really fast. So you know, to, to address the current households that have income below fifty percent of median family income. And the new, you're talking about a thousand units. I don't think the city will be able to support a thousand units of production over the next five years for income subsidized, so that, that below sixty percent of median family income. But might you be focusing on over the next, I don't know, twenty years, three hundred? Or looking at the, the new households for below fifty percent? Plus the new households for fifty to eighty percent? And I can't do these, this math very quickly in my head, but that's about four hundred units. And over twenty years, if I'm doing this math right, that's about twenty units a year. So is twenty units a year achievable? And again, I think you'd have to have a better sense of what funding you have to get there. That may well be very achievable, maybe that's too achievable and the city should aim higher than that.
That chart, if you're looking for it, is on page fifty-four of your packet.
And Beth, can you clarify that chart is for existing or projected households that are cost burdened? Not all households under, you know, fifty percent of AMI?
That is correct, that is correct. We did some fancy math and some interpretation from census data. Estimate the current households who are cost burdened and under fifty percent of median family income. The current households that are cost burdened and eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. And use similar percentages to project out for the new households by two thousand and thirty-five.
Any other questions, Gladys?
No, that was my question, thank you.
Okay, Jessica?
Not at this point, I have some discussion questions later.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Because I was really glad to see that there was a monitoring component actually included in the plan. So I think it's just crucial to be able to track progress. And I was pleased to see that there was a statement in there that there's some thought based on the monitoring that there was, that you could adjust your directions. So that's kind of like a feedback loop that I think is really kind of crucial. You go about these things, but I will say that so that's kind of like a feedback loop that I think is really kind of crucial as we go about these things. But I will say that, you know, given all the different strategies that in all, given that all the other, all the strategies are actually looking towards producing the same thing to some extent, that there's going to be hat, there's going to uh you need to take care of me, to be able to make sure that you're able to separate those things out and attribute them to strategies. So you know what's working and what's not working. But that's just my comment on that.
Thanks, Tim. Anything else from anyone? Right now? No, okay. Go ahead, um Beth and Jennifer.
Jennifer, shall I just leave these questions up here and hand this back over to you?
Sure, thank you, Beth. Um so in the big picture sense, we want to make sure that we didn't miss any strategies that you expected to be in here um or that there are strategies in here that you think need to be eliminated, that just can't be accomplished or included in 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 the report and in the strategy moving forward. Drilling down a little bit more, um we'd like your feedback about the proposed implementation approach and does it align with your priorities? Um some of these projects, like Beth described, are standalone efforts. Some get folded into existing efforts. Um and as she said, some take more effort than others. And we have a timeline of some estimated sequencing for those. Um and then finally, are there any clarifications or refinements that we need to make in order for you to adopt this on May ninth?
Alright, I've got a couple things.
Okay.
Um so are these um in order of importance? I mean, they are totally, a lot of things are just totally different one from another. Some are going to take a lot longer, some are shorter, but was there something like, you know, you've just got to start working on this one today? Or not?
Um generally, I would say no, they're not prioritized. Um I will say that the one recommendation um that kind of came up toward the end of the process and came out of one of our listening sessions was the um so-called one person, one license uh fix to our short-term rental regulations. And I I that is one that I think there's some urgency to that. Um so if if I were to choose one, that it's relatively uh easy effort, um not a complicated effort and one that we can do quickly. There, your work plan includes some work around the um uh code improvements. Uh so that is something that we'll start talking about this year. There's some funding, I think, in the budget for some implementation and so we'll figure out the best way to use that. We- work is already beginning on um the discussions of forming a new urban renewal district. So there are some things already in motion. So but other, but generally, no, there's not a prioritized. Unless they, they're all important.
Okay.
I I have a comment. Sorry, I can't hear you're talking. Um what I don't see on here is staffing in order to sustain and continue this work. Uh as we are entering into budget, I think that's something that we should all consider or take into account as, you know, it has been mentioned that this work will be continuous. It will not stop at the end of the year.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Rivera. Um if if there, it is mentioned in the report, I think in one place in particular, there, under some recommendations, and I'm I'm not sure what page is for that. Um there's
Jennifer, it starts on page fifty-two of the uh report, um and it's other, under other issues and recommendations.
Just page eighty-six of the council packet. Um yeah, that's not quite right here.
Eighty-seven.
Page, yeah. Page eighty-seven. Um there is some mention about uh thinking about staffing and and adding capacity, um both in terms of a position that might be a housing analyst, also in terms of adding capacity to our engineering department to move the review of all housing development forward more quickly. Uh so there are some discussion, there is a little bit of discussion in here, but it, you're right, Counselor Rivera, that it's timely to talk about with the budget conversation.
Thanks, Gladys. Other things in the report, people?
Um, well, I mean, with respect to these questions, are there strategies or items missing from the report? It seems like you guys have done a pretty thorough job of um scoping a a whole wide range of uh particular things that we can consider. Are there strategies or items that should be eliminated in consideration? I don't think so, but you know, when I when I think about them, and I think this gets staffing, but it also has to do with our time as well. You know, that there's going to be a significant investment of of time on our part. This is very involved discussions to get from the report to actually actionable items. Does the proposed implementation approach align with council priorities? I think it does. Um you know, I think that um honestly, um the emotionality that you you exhibited um really kind of, it's just, it's it's, you know, these things are really real things for real people. You know, and I think that that's part of, you know, part of what it is. And it's easy to be detached from it, given our certain situations, but I think that we all need to be brought back down to the the point that if you lose your housing, or if you're living in your car, it really stinks. And it's a very traumatic, like a life-altering experience. So, yeah, I think it does align with our uh priorities. You know, and aren't there clarifications or refinements? Probably, but I guess we're good.
Thanks, Tim. Megan?
Sure. Um and obviously, I've been privileged to kind of watch this develop over the whole process, so um which has been really wonderful for me and I and I think for the community, hopefully. Um so overall, I I I love the strategy. It totally fits with what we've been doing, um makes sense. I I think, and I talked to Jennifer a little bit about this earlier today, but there were kind of two points that didn't like a hundred percent jive with what I thought we were going towards that I I did just want to um bring up if this is the appropriate time. So um the first one is on uh like page thirty-three and I think thirty-five of the um council packet where it's the the general obligation bond is kind of presented as a like, oh, we will look at the feasibility of it, or we will maybe do it. Um and and you know, fully acknowledging the reality of we need to look at the feasibility, we need to do a lot of study, we don't know how much it will be or what it's for, or if it will pass. But I guess in in this strategy, like all the other strategies that may or may not get implemented, the strategy is to do it um and to get the bond, uh or at least try to get the bond, not just to think about going for a bond. So I yes, phrasing that better, presented as um you know, the the this, the strategy is to get the money. Many of those strategies rely on having that money to implement them. So kind of changing some of that phrasing or presentation to match that I think would be important to acknowledge what we actually want to do.
Like getting, getting a bond out there for people to vote on, whatever all that process to get there is the strategy, is is the thing, not just looking at it.
Yes, yeah. So like, don't just evaluate the feasibility, but pursue a bond. Um and and obviously evaluating the feasibility as part of the implementation step, but um so that's the one. And then, sorry, on page sixty of the packet, just minor, but uh so it's the checkboxes of um, you know, larger or smaller investment for various things and um in continuous city-led land banking, it seemed like smaller investment would be checked under um producing low and moderate income rental housing as well as affordable homeownership. So just kind of a minor addition.
Sure. Specifics?
Thank you for the report. I'm just looking at your questions and trying to think if there's a question I might have in relation to it. So with respect to the first one, are there strategies or items missing from the report? I just have it maybe out of curiosity, uh and not necessarily advocate for it or not, I'm just curious. Because there's something that was on the report that I'm just wondering if it was discussed, maybe thought of as a bad idea or just maybe not considered. And that was some sort of um like a regional strategy coordinating with other municipalities or other regional actors, regional transportation as a way of helping of our problem locally. And and maybe that's already inherent in other things like the cat board and things like that, but I just just to answer your question was there a discussion by this group of kind of regional strategies or regional transportation strategies that might help the problem?
Um I think I'll, thank you, Counselor Haney, for that question. I think I'll answer it a couple ways. Um we did have a listening session with the other jurisdictions who are taxing districts. And um there is definitely a recognition that this is not just a city of Hood River issue. This issue spans beyond the boundaries of the city. However, this project was aimed at looking at, as a city, what can we do? What role can we play um in this issue? Which is not to take away from the fact that it is a regional issue and needs a regional attention. Um there was, I think, some energy in the listening session with those other entities about continuing uh multi-jurisdictional conversations. Who would lead that effort is not decided. And I would uh maybe look to the mayor, she was participated in that session. But i-it's it's also a recognition that each entity has a role to play and each entity needs to make its plan for what it's going to, what actions it's going to take. So this plan is the actions the city will take.
Yeah, I was at that meeting and I think you were right, Jennifer. We're, you know, it's, the city's trying to do something, the city's had a goal. On, uh, this has been a goal for years and years and years. And the other other entities, it is not their number one goal. Um I don't think, I I just from the conversation we had, they're very concerned about it. They have the same problem we do, but they have a whole bunch of other things that they've got to, you know, like the pandemic and the health department, the counties, you know, all these things. Um they have a uh a bond now that'll be up in two more years, I believe, or two and a half more years, that they're going to have to pass again just to keep going at the same rate they are now. So they have, they're kind of not in as good a position as we are, and they recognize that during the meeting. Um although they they sympathize, they they have problem too. You know, we have infrastructure, we have a sewer treatment plant, they have a big county to take care of. And where are they going to put housing? They've got Odell and they've got Parkdale. And where is that housing going to go if they're going to try and do it? So um I think it, you know, it's been number ten, you know, high, high, high um issue for the city for quite some time. You know, and it's high for them, but it maybe it's a seven. And they don't, you know, they aren't doing this, what we're doing right now. So um I think they're a partner for sure, but I don't think they're a lead partner right now at this time in space.
And I would just add that as you read in the report, some of the implementation for specific strategies does involve the partnership of other entities. Um so that is reflected in.
Jessica? And then Gladys.
Yeah, thank you. Um a couple of questions. Um one was, you know, Beth had pulled up the um that page about like other um issues and recommendations. And when do we decide on those?
Uh I'll take that question. I think maybe Counselor Saunders and I talked about that, or it came up earlier today, but I would say it it's a little bit up to council in terms of which of those are salient to you, that you want to pursue and that we we together, council and staff, have the resources to pursue. So there's not any specified timeline, is the short answer.
Jennifer, if I could add on to that, a number of those were were partially things that we didn't want to miss in the shuffle. In other words, we were trying to get a limited number of actions, um strategies, but these were also things that were important um that the city might take on in smaller ways.
Yeah, maybe an example of that is the communication. Um so you have in your work plan um some communication efforts and to the extent that housing and housing needs can get woven into that. That's this, it's in this report to kind of bring that to all of our attention.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, so each of these has um really good questions under like implementation questions. And are those, um who is answering them and when is that?
Most of them are, uh you will be answering when we bring them to you. That that's probably my the shortest answer. And I it's probably not an exhaustive list, but it's to help frame um for all of us the kinds of issues that need to be discussed and decisions that need to be made in order to put some of these, to realize some of these um strategies.
Um the other question, I guess, just to see how much it was talked about, was like a new food and beverage tax. I mean, I know that it failed a couple of years ago when we were, the county was talking about it for public safety, but that there just wasn't a sense that it was something that would be feasible at all.
Um I would step back and answer that by saying that uh some of those, most of the successful affordable housing programs that I've observed um not closely, but you know, it it's some distance, but in places I've lived in Colorado uh are successful because they have a dedicated revenue stream, whether it's a real estate transfer tax, a sales tax, the ti-the types of revenue streams that we don't see commonly in Oregon or that are legal in Oregon. Um so the food and beverage tax is maybe a possibility. There were some ideas in here where there was a recognition that the city probably doesn't have the bandwidth to take um a a leap on some of those or be the test case for maybe it was taxing second homes. Uh you know, adding a somehow a tax on second homes. We don't know that that's legal. Are we going to be the ones to take the lead and 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 head to court over something like that? We decided that when we're looking at a limited number of actionable strategies, that probably doesn't fall into that category. Um food and beverage tax is kind of along those lines in that it's going to take a lot more work. And we were looking at what can we do relatively near term that um is achievable?
Yeah, I was thinking about, we had done that. Sorry, things fell. Um you and I had both heard that one from Summit County, Colorado, where they had the food and beverage tax and it it just sounded so promising, but I I agree, it sounds like something that's probably a little bit farther out. And these are looking at the next five years. So I appreciate that. That's all I had.
Megan?
Oh, I mean, I I'm basically going to second Jennifer, but I think there is a list of all the potential revenue sources. Um and I and we did at least briefly discuss them all of the task force, and it was the the urban renewal and the general obligation bond. We're definitely the ones that as a group felt like they were the most likely to succeed in, you know, the timeframe we're talking about.
And it looks like, you know, looking at some of these pages of the other things
It looks like, you know, looking at some of these pages of the other things that you guys looked at, you know, if League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties had something that they were going to go to the legislature with, that was something to do with second homes, we would, you know, rah rah. And, you know, we'd be in there and we'd have a lot of support, but we weren't going to, we didn't want to do it alone and be the first test case, so to speak.
That's a good way of summarizing it. Thank you, Mayor.
And if I may add, in some discussion I was having last week when Dustin and I were out on a League of Oregon Cities presentation, I had a number of people from coastal cities approach me and I was talking about the second home tax. And they were like, yeah, we should do that. So I think that there may well be interest in other communities throughout Oregon.
So if we adopt this basically as is, and then you have all these questions, then you bring that back to us for, okay, let's tackle number one now. Do we have enough staffing for that? Whatever that might be, or let's do this small one. And then in six months, we're going to, we want to try and start tackling X. Is that what we would probably be doing?
I think some of the efforts will be somewhat concurrent. The tax exemption ordinance is something that maybe we can lean on Will a little bit to help with, whereas the the, well, Will's involved in a lot of these, I guess. There are, as I said before, there are ongoing discussions about the urban renewal, renewal district formation. So we aren't going to take them each in isolation, in isolation, one at a time. But we'll bring them to you in a way that I think makes sense in terms of time and resources and what we can accomplish quickly and what is going to take a little bit longer effort or time to to talk about and implement.
Oh, Gladys, did you have something, Gladys?
No, nothing else to add.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I would just maybe ask if there are some maybe head nods about Counselor Saunders' question about the general obligation bond and whether it should be more clearly communicated as something that will be pursued as opposed to explored would be the the way of summarizing, I think, her concern about how it's described in the report. And then we can refine that when we bring it back. On page, on the graphic, on page 35 of your packet, there's sort of a faded box with dotted line. And that could stay as is, or if you agree with Counselor Saunders, we can make that less tentative looking.
I agree with Counselor Saunders. Let's be intentional.
Yeah, I think that what it says, you know, if we just change it, the color, it would be more intentional. Because it says, explore, develop concept, vet with stakeholders and send voters. I mean, that's one, two, three, send to voters. It isn't, and maybe send to voters. I suppose if we explored options and developed concept, and when we vetted the stakeholders and we did surveys, we were like, you are not going to pass this, then we'd have to go back and we'd have to do a whole bunch of education, which would need to be added in here first, and then do more polling. But the goal would be to get to a bond that we could pass. So I would, I mean, I'm changing it to the other color. You're good with it, Tim? Eric?
Yeah, changing the colors is fine. I don't, I don't know if we're trying to say what urgent the voters were particularly, so. I'm not here to sit, tell the voters to kind of decide.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, I have, I have some opinions on some of these that I think are, you know, I'd really like to pursue that one and that one quicker. And I think this one might be important than that one, but I, I think they're all important. And I think you guys kind of vetted out all the ones that were like, oh, I wish we could do this, but we can't really do that right now. And these seem to have more impact.
Well, and council feedback about definitely do this sooner than later before this one.
Well, I think land banking, in my opinion, is number one. And I think urban renewal is right alongside of it, or at least number two, because if we do urban renewal on the west side, we can purchase some property. So I mean, I think
I was going to say for land making to be number one, finding money is actually number one.
That's number one, but urban renewal, land banking. And I think that the, changing the short-term rental thing is up there high. It's because, because it seems like a pretty easier lift to get that done, to just do a tweak and amendment on that. But to me, those are the top two. Because if, because if the land gets sold, you're not, you're, you know, then we have to expand the urban growth boundary. So, you know, it's just goes on and on. And the faster we get it, the less expensive it'll be. Others on the order or the importance?
It makes perfect sense to me.
I mean, I'll basically concur, except that I think finding money as soon as possible is the critical bit to actually succeed at land banking or anything else.
I would also add staffing to that.
Anyone else? Anything else for Jennifer? Yeah?
Thank you all for your continued efforts on this important issue.
Thank you for, thank you for all your work on it. Really appreciate it. All right, let's see. We I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the work session. And I think we can just, we've got 10 till eight, but I think we'll push through here. Unless people want a break, I'm going to just go with this. And we'll open the regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Mayor, you added the resolution for declaring tax law 500 surplus and so. But otherwise, no other corrections or additions. Okay, so we have added to the consent agenda, resolution 2022 oh four, oh four. Right. So are there any one that needs to pull anything off the consent agenda or has any conflicts with the consent agenda?
I do want to have a conversation around the liquor licenses as a whole in the community.
Okay. And anyone else, anything?
Your Honor, just in abundance of questions, I'd like to accuse myself of a wishful.
Okay, and that would be, let's see.
Number three variants.
Number three, okay. So let's just go ahead and Gladys and go ahead and start on, you're not talking about this specific application for an OLCC permit, but you're just talking about OLCC permits in general. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I am concerned about the liquor licenses in general, especially the amount that we have given out in, let's say, the last year. We all receive those emails from Lieutenant Shaylee on a weekly basis. And something that continues to catch my attention is the amount of DUIs that continue to take place. And so I started really thinking about, as we continue to issue these licenses, we know that there isn't enough transportation to get people around in the afternoon, in the evening hours. And I'd like for us all to discuss that. And what can we do to provide more access or provide more support to ensure that there is more transportation available in these evening hours to ensure that folks have an option and are not driving while intoxicated. So I'd like to hear other folks' thoughts.
I don't know exactly how much transportation is available, you know, whether there's taxis or cat bus rides or you know, I think we probably have to research how much is available, because I don't really know. Does anyone else know how much is available for people that want to call, that want to ride? You know?
Mayor, maybe I'll ask the city reporter, how many tax cab companies are licensed right now? Two tax cab companies. And we don't have a regulatory framework for kind of the newer ride sharing type apps. That was something that was considered during council goal setting, but didn't rise to the top as something to tackle this year.
Anecdotally, I think we are underserved.
With, with that?
There's more demand than service. People couldn't, it just takes, it takes a long time.
I mean, I think anecdotally, that's correct. I guess I, in the scheme of what the city can control of, we can't force a taxi company to come here would be what we're already working on with CAT to expand and create a robust, you know, public transit service. So I think we're already on a path to be working on this issue.
Yeah, maybe, maybe to be a little bit more intentional with, when we have a discussion with CAT or I don't know, do the taxi services work in the evening? Do you know? Are they worth 24 hours a day, Jennifer? Okay, all right. But just not enough of them in the summer or anytime, maybe. I don't know.
One other thing that services the, we're supporting CAT to get a trolley. And I, last I heard from them, they are still hoping to take advantage of that grant that we provided them in this year's budget to purchase a trolley. And then I believe part of our requirements is they have to operate it for at least five years as part of us assisting them to purchase it. So I would at least have the downtown area trolley service again.
But that doesn't run at midnight.
No, it doesn't get the evening, the evening coverage.
I was just going to say that I, I believe CAT operates until eight. But I just, I guess besides doing the, the permitting, like for the ride sharing companies, I just, I'm not sure. I'm interested in what Counselor Rivera sees as the city's role, like what, what we really could do about it.
Well, this is a public safety issue and these are our constituents. And if there isn't any access, I think it's our responsibility to at least address or talk about the issue. We may necessarily not be the one who's leading the efforts, but at least convening the conversation on what can we do to simply create access or more access, because this is an issue and it continues to come up. I mean, I'm curious to see the amount of DUIs that have happened in the last six months and the last year to, I guess, so that we can see how much of an issue it is and that it affects our constituents. It's a public safety issue.
I guess I'd like to, you know, if we were going to try and just do a little bit more analysis of it, I'd like to find out from the taxi companies, how many phone calls do you get that you have to turn down? Because if, you know, they're saying, well, you know, on Saturday and Friday and Saturday night, we usually get 10 phone calls and I can take care of six of them. Because I just don't, you know, they want me to drive them to Parkdale or whatever it is. If they say, I usually get four, I can take care of all the calls I get. And those people are not calling a taxi at all, then I would be, well, okay. But if there's lots of calls that are not getting addressed, then I would definitely think, you know, here's another job that somebody could have. And we need to let people know about it. Megan?
I guess, and this isn't necessarily a city to-do list, but maybe a conversation with Visit Hood River of, I suspect a lot of folks who do not live here assume there are options, go out, have a good night, and then do not have an option. And so if there's a way to educate visitors in town before they get here, or when they get here, about what is or isn't available and how they need to plan their night accordingly. Perhaps that's an avenue to addressing some of this.
And that might be, and I don't know if we can do this, Abigail or Will, but when someone does get a DUI, would we have statistics on whether they actually had a Hood River, Odell, Parkdale address versus a Portland address? You know, are these people that just don't know what's going on or is it locals? You know, that, that might tell us a little bit more about, more data. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can ask these. So are you interested in staff doing a bit more research on pieces of this? I mean, happy to have conversation with CAT, see if they have a response to. Certainly talk to law enforcement about what the statistics are, if you'd like to see more information brought to you on this. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm okay. I don't want to spend a huge amount of staff time on it, but I think it's worth a small amount of research at least. You know, we're, we're not going to become the taxi service ourselves, but is it people that aren't calling or is there just, there's just not enough service? Or is it education that needs to happen? You know, maybe the chamber needs to do more education on it or something.
Or third option is that people that are getting arrested with DUIs just don't care. Just getting in their car and driving.
Yeah, yeah. And they aren't going to call a taxi anyway. So there's that, it might be that too, yeah. So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what it is. Yeah. Yeah, he might anecdotally know a whole bunch of answers to these questions. Okay, that sounds great. We can pull together some information. And it sounds like I'm not looking for a big policy question or a, you know, looking to start a new program, but just to bring you back some facts about just DUI and transportation options in the city. And we can go from there. Sounds good.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You talked about this before and asked you if our role in approving these liquor licenses. So, you know, we have a specific part in this process. Can, so can, wanted to do
Yeah, thank you for the question. I spoke with our representative or manager in the area for OLCC. And I spoke with Lieutenant Shaylee this morning. And generally, our role, as I understand it, and I'm an expert here, is that the city recommends for approval and OLCC is the actual issuer of the license. And generally, what she explained to me is that we apply criteria consistently. So if, if an establishment meets that criteria, you know, both OLCC criteria and then the criteria that the police have done, you know, they've also done a check when they make the recommendation. And that really, then we are to apply or to approve or to recommend approval, just so that we are consistent in the application of our rules. So our role is really regulatory and routine. We're not selecting which ones we think are a good place and which place is not a good place.
So do we have statute criteria?
That I, I will need to look into, but I think we do have, I think OLCC sets criteria. And chief custody is not in your state, but asking for an update on that.
We routinely, these end up on the consent agenda.
Exactly.
We don't discuss them case by case.
So there's a defined process in the police department, involves background checks for relevant offenses that might make someone not a good candidate to run a drinking establishment. I'd say that's the bulk of what, kind of what the background research is.
And I can recall an instance, at least one instance where there was objection based on background check.
I would also add that chief custody also chimed in that we also monitoring things throughout the year. So when it comes time for renewal, police are looking back at any activity that can, you know, reports of underage served or over serving or someone who had DUI who then says they, you know, they were over served at that establishment. So that is part of the renewal routine.
So just for the purposes of publicity in this figure, this, this discussion, I do want to decouple the background or approval of liquor licenses, licenses is not necessarily related to DUIs or it's not, that's not necessarily our responsibility. We're not, you know, we're not promoting people driving drunk because we're reviewing.
Is that right?
I think even language wise, it's weird. Approving a recommendation, we're not actually approving the license. And, and the one time that I remember where we didn't recommend, OLCC still issued the license. So we don't really control this.
Right, um. Is everyone good on that? Are you good Gladys on that then?
Yeah, you know, again, I'm not expecting that the city is now the transportation expert for the gorge, but just paying attention to these weekly reports that are coming through and, um, seeing that this is an issue in our community. So, thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks. All right, so consent agenda, um, let's pull number three off. And then we can, if someone wants to make a motion without number three on there, then we'll do it separately.
So I would move, we approve the consent agenda minus item number three.
Megan has made a motion and Tim has seconded, um, the approval of the consent agenda minus, um, item number three. Um, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Um, chair votes aye, uh, yea, or excuse me, nays or abstentions? All right, can I get a motion for number three?
I would move, we approve item number three, variants to maximum driving with Sverloshvob remodel.
And Megan has made a motion to approve, um, item number three on the consent agenda. Tim has seconded that. Um, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Abstentions?
Any abstentions?
Okay, chair votes aye, any nays? All right. Um, regular business items, I think we just have this one business item, correct? We didn't have any additional, um, Will?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. We have the, uh, third, uh, fiscal quarter financial performance ru, uh, report is the very last item in your agenda. Um, this is, uh, now with, uh, 75% of the fiscal year completed and, um, become, uh, much more solid estimates close here. And, uh, this, uh, the projected ending balance has been, uh, what has been incorporated into the proposed budgets, um, or has influenced the proposed budgets, uh, beginning fund balance. Really not, uh, too much to talk about here. I think this will be a short report because, um, essentially right along the trend lines that we've been seeing through the entire year. Um, the two, um, kind of unexpected, uh, items were, one, a big delinquent tax payment from change of ownership on the railroad, uh, up to the previous levy tax, uh, estimates. And then a big lump of, um, engineering, uh, fees got paid for some complex development proposals. Uh, the largest one being the Adams Creek Cohousing. Uh, fees, uh, really changed the revenue, uh, outlook for, uh, engineering charges for services and really helped, uh, balance out the, uh, overage, uh, in, uh, spending, uh, that we had been monitoring and seeing really throughout the entire year. Um, so that's, that's good news. Um, those two items really make up about half of the improvement. Uh, but there was broad-based, uh, kind of, uh, upward revisions to a lot of line items, just around the edges, you know, within the margin of error, um, but broad-based. And so cumulatively, uh, increased the expected ending fund balance by about $200,000 as compared to the previous report. And that's, it's really long and short of it.
Great. So, we don't need a good report. So we don't need a motion or anything?
Uh, informational item for you.
Informationally, okay. Great. Um, Mayor, a couple of things. Um, I've got a report in front of me on the Heights Open House, uh, regarding, uh, urban renewal and, um, the plan for the Heights. There was about 250 people that came to the, um, public open event over two days, um, city and county people. So that was an amazing turnout. Um, I thought this, I mean, I, I don't remember a public event that we put on that's had that many people in a long time. But, you know, COVID is kind of waning, let's knock on wood. But, um, but that, you know, just shows that we did a lot of outreach and it reached people and they, and they think it's important and they came, so that's great. Um, there were businesses that provided food and drinks. Um, I wanted to thank Lake Taco, Hood River Taqueria, Thai House, um, Porto di Angeles, Chicken and Teriyaki, Fiesta de Botanero, Pine Street Bakery and Working Hands Brewery. And did Volcanic, oh, that's the next one, okay. And special thanks to Sarah and Amanda from Volcanic Bottle Shop, who are onsite and working the entire event and, uh, catered according to OLCC, um, uh, regulations. Um, Anson's Bike Buddies was also onsite and they gave away 10 bikes that day. So that was fantastic. Uh, they need, they have requests for 11 more bikes. So if you have a bike that you aren't using and you'd like to donate it to Anson's Bike Buddies, um, that's, I think that group's been in existence for 20 years at least. So, um, they've provided a lot of bikes for kids over the years. Um, the next step is the project team will package the comments and provide a summary and, uh, get it back to Urban Renewal Agency. So, great, great turnout. There is, um, this has been publicly noticed, but the Parks District has invited, uh, city, all of, all the entities that were involved in doing the Parks Master Plan to a meeting on Thursday evening. And I think people that can come if, have already RSVP'd, but I just wanted to let the, anyone that's listening, um, we are going to be going to a meeting invited by, uh, Parks and Rec. Um, I think to talk about, you know, funding for, for parks. So, um, that'll be interesting. Um, the other thing is, is that Abigail's been here about almost six months, is that right? And so, um, we don't want to let, um, our evaluation timeframe get out of hand. Um, and so I actually, Abigail and, um, Jennifer got me this, uh, manager evaluations, and I went through it and there's really some good recommendations in here. And so I, um, one of the recommendations is do not do this during budget time. Or, you know, uh, write during strategic planning. You know, you, you need to kind of have it as a separate item. And so I don't think we need to do it this month or next month. But, um, Jennifer, if you could just get an electronic version of this and send it to councilor so they can read it, you know, when we don't have another packet that's 200 pages long that they have to go through. Um, it's not super long, but it has some great ideas in it. And, um, I'm going to kind of pull some stuff out of it and come up with some ideas on how to start doing that process. But I think we won't, we are not going to start it next meeting. Um, but we'll, we'll get this information to you guys. So we don't, aren't laxing in getting the process started. So, uh, that's all I've got. Eric?
Sure, so just real quick, um, and I've mentioned this a little bit along the way over maybe the last year, but maybe not in full detail, but I'm never quite sure where sort of one's role as a city volunteer sort of starts and ends and your role as a city councillor begins. But I've been volunteering, um, with this project. Um, it's kind of a, a group of, uh, the groups from, um, kind of law enforcement in Wasco County, Sherman County and, uh, Hood River County to try to bring a chronic care, uh, mental health facility to the Mid Columbia using, uh, an amalgamation of public dollars. And working closely with Sheriff Lane and Sheriff, uh, English on this. And we've been working about a year and I guess I, I wanted to just communicate, because I've told, and people know that I'm on the city council. And in fact, just get to the end, speaking a little bit with, uh, city management having Sheriff Lane come be a presentation on this, just a real brief one. So people know about it, because mental health, I think, is a, something a lot of people can, you know, broad-based political consensus to do something about our problems. So in any event, what's happened just in the last few weeks is, um, we, I say we very loosely, but this group of kind of, uh, leaders in this industry, which are, uh, uh, the district attorneys from all three counties, uh, law enforcement from three counties, uh, Mid Columbia Medical Center, uh, and others have formed an advisory council. We have an actual constituency document that I have drafted that, um, will be represented or be urging and advocating to Columbia Care, which is kind of a Medicaid Medicare provider for mental health and other services kind of behavioral health. And combination of money between Columbia Care that has money that you can spend for the benefit of the community. And then Wasco County got a grant for like four or five million dollars. Putting those buckets together, the vision is sometime in maybe the next five years, turn a shovel and open a, uh, a mental health facility for chronic emergency care in the greater Mid Columbia. That'll be in Wasco County, but, but Hood River County be a beneficiary. It'd be a place to go other than the emergency room. So law enforcement, you know, interfaces regularly with folks that have health struggles. And it's a real problem because they either arrest them, which sometimes is the worst thing to do, or take them to the emergency room, which makes the hospital have to scratch in their heads what to do. So we have an in-between that can kind of really help people. So, anyway, um, all that's really happened so far is this advisory committee has been formed. I'm not on the advisory committee, I just helped form it as a volunteer. And, uh, Columbia Care's Board of Directors met and approved this legal constituency document. And now the goal is to have this platform for kind of Mid Columbia representatives, voice what their vision is to Columbia Care and then hopefully use the Wasco County grant dollars to then hopefully go turn and show those here in the next few years. But Sheriff Lane from Wasco County, um, or excuse me, Lane McGill, Sheriff McGill, Lane McGill, call him by his first name. He is kind of the informal leader of this. And so, anyway, I mentioned to Sheriff McGill that, uh, you know, the city of Hood River as a entity probably has an interest in this. And so he thought he was warned of that idea of doing, you know, maybe just like a 10-minute presentation. Uh, I think actually, I'm pointing here, but I think, uh, Kenny, who spoke to us earlier is on this group as well. But in any event, that's, I'm just, I guess I'm warned of the idea of a presentation. So we know as an organization what they're doing. I guess I just wanted to, I never really did a full explanation for these really long Zoom meetings that happen about, uh, once a month. Um, but that's something that involved, uh, kind of really as a volunteer lawyer, but also communicating as a single, single city councillor that we're, at least I'm in favor of this type of, in the respect of living.
I think Sheriff McGill might be on the housing collaborative group too. So he's, you know, very, knows, you know, a lot of these problems through his job and then hearing through the housing's information too, so. That's quite a undertaking. That's fantastic.
So we got, we got that drafted and we're going, I mean, it's not built yet, but there, there's a facility like this in Bend, it's kind of the model that sort of the folks are aspiring to, but there's a five million, five-ish million dollar grant to at least Columbia Care dollars, I think that could have.
Thanks. If you'd like, okay. Megan, yeah, were you, were you asking us if we should have him come and give us a presentation?
I was, I was proposing, yes, I was proposing and I, we talked about it. He's warm too, but it'd be 10 minutes and you could hear about it.
I mean, I'm good to hear.
I'm up for that, yeah. Yes. Um, I, yeah, I, I went to the Heights Open House, actually checked in both days just for my own interest. And I, um, it's amazing turnout. Definitely want to second the, the thanks to all the community volunteers and to the staff who gave up, uh, quite a bit of not normal work hours to be there. So thank you guys. Um, but it seemed really promising. I do not envy the folks that have to try and combine all those comments into something logical. Um, that'll, that'll be fun. Um, I also, uh, listened into the county meeting last week, um, which had a lot of stuff that wasn't really about city stuff, but they did, um, I heard from a couple commissioners during the meeting, some interest, expressed some interest in learning more about the Heights process and how that, you know, would interface with county, um, you know, residents. Um, and then just a, a fun point Arthur mentioned, that's apparently the Mitchell Point Tunnel, uh, is completed. So there should be no more blasting on the highway. Um, so, you know, no longer the waits, figured that was exciting news. Um, and then I did just want to, you know, for, for anyone who is or isn't listening, um, the May 17th election is coming up, ballots, I think they're getting mailed this week. So everyone get out the vote. Um, that's always important.
Kim?
Thanks, all this, second everybody's thoughts about the Heights gathering. It was great to see all the people out and engaged and doing their thing. And so it's, uh, do the positive stuff.
Um, Gladys?
Thank you, Mayor, um, Counselor Haney, I welcome, um, Sheriff McGill to present for us. I am aware of this project through my work at, and I think it would be great for us all to have that education together. Um, I echo Counselor Saunders', um, get out there and vote, please, do so. And I too want to thank, um, the city staff and all of our community partners for the Heights project, um, engaging our, our community members, whether you had positive comment, comments, negative comments. Uh, it was just nice to see folks get together and, and get their input. And I'm excited for more opportunities like that for other projects as well.
Jessica?
I'm just echoing everyone's appreciation for the Heights Open House, which was awesome. And also for the safety fair at the Easter egg hunt. The city had a good showing there and, um, appreciation for that. Um, and then I was just going to share, uh, Business Oregon today announced there is, it's a new grant program for live venue operators, producers and presenters. So if folks know of venues that had to, um, that usually would have like a ticketed event and had to close or, um, fairs, festivals, that kind of stuff, there's, um, grants open through May 16th. Um, and you could probably either find that on Business Oregon's website or reach out to me and I could find it for you.
Thanks, Jessica. Um, I think that's it. And we don't have an executive session, but we do have a budget committee meeting on Wednesday evening. Starts at six, six o'clock, six o'clock on Wednesday. So hopefully you can make it. Um, all exciting, yeah, here at the city, city hall. All right, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned.